Whatever time it is, my watch is not.
Correct.
Six oh three. Okay, so we already did the attendance. So last meeting, I neglected to solicit volunteers for the nominating process because we would have otherwise been voting on officers today, except that I did not do that. So we are not voting on officers today, which is probably just as well since there are only five of us. So if anybody would like to volunteer to do nominating, anyone?
When at all?
You put your finger where your nose definitely.
How do you nominate?
Great. Terrific. Do we need more than one? Or yeah, okay. Thank you, Mary Lou. Excellent. So then we can vote at the next meeting.
So we give our ideas for president or chair and clerk to Mary Lou.
To Mary Lou.
It's just chair and clerk?
So ideas, suggestions, thoughts.
Have you been doing this two years?
I have been doing this for two years.
Really?
Yes, I know. It went by quickly, didn't it? Yeah. But if anybody else would like to step in, step away. No, step toward.
So one of you two should probably send an email so that the other four people.
He knows. Yeah, I can do that.
Maybe you should, well, okay.
Oh, yeah, maybe you should do that. I guess that's right.
So that they can reply.
Yeah, and maybe give a deadline.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they won't pay any attention to the deadline. So they'll get three emails.
Right. Okay, that is enough. Thank you, Mary Lou. Everybody read the minutes.
Yes.
Yes. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Do we approve the minutes?
Aye.
Aye. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, okay, Megan.
Um, purchase report. My apologies, it's not on the screen. It seems every time I plug the.
It's okay. We're not gonna read it while we're talking.
Okay.
So don't worry about it.
Um, okay, so we have a retirement announcement. Gail Walsh is with us on August 1st to go on her next chapter of her life. She's been with us for 18 years. This is gonna be a significant loss for us. So we are just starting to think about that position and what still works about it and what maybe could change. And Gail's giving us some nice insight too as to kind of how her position has changed over the years. She's working on the job description, working with HR, um, making sure that we have a nice transition. We hope to get somebody pretty much immediately after she leaves, just so they don't have any staffing issues in the evenings. Especially with this being a time that everybody wants to take vacation. So, um, so we're super sad to see her go. She's done a great job already of kind of starting the transition. Um, so if you see her, please congratulate her and.
Is she still a go by the title of reference librarian?
Yes.
Even though the technology is done by Christian and focus.
Yeah, she's still the reference librarian. Um, I think our observation is that reference questions don't come in as frequently as they used to. So maybe this person's job description changes to add some more outreach, not to get rid of the reference part. There's always gonna be reference questions, but maybe not have it be the focus of the position because it's really kind of become.
Adult services.
Yeah, less of the job. So it's gonna be adult services. We'll have some more outreach, community partnerships, things like that in the job description. Um, you know, the expectation to go to Eco Fast and to the farmers markets and things like that. So.
And she does all the book groups and discussion club stuff, right?
Yes, yes. Um, so there'll be a look at, you know, do we shake those up? Do we keep them? And it'll kind of be up to the person that we hire and how they feel about different things. Maybe they start them and just kind of gauge if we're getting the attendance still that we're interested in and all those kinds of things. So that's the future of that position. So we'll see. It's a little bit difficult hiring in Cohasset sometimes just because we're not close to the highway. So our candidates generally come from Quincy or Weimath or Norwell or Hingham, one of our kind of nearby communities. Even like the commuter rail is just a little bit too far to walk to get somebody from, from the city. So it'll be interesting to see kind of who we can pull for this position. Uh, we had National Dona Day, which was a huge success, as you might guess. Just the same type of outcome as, as the coffee from Seabird, you know, people gathering and, um, Michaela had, this is really the first program that, or passive program that Michaela has put together. I think she did a beautiful job. She solicited some donations from Dona King to make sure that we'd get things on a discount. She was responsible to make sure we had all of our plates and napkins and tablecloth and all that kind of thing. So really proud of her and excited for her next ideas. Um, the corporate behavior policy is in the hands of our town lawyer. So we're not gonna be able to talk about that today, which is probably just as well. We have uh, we have our adult, we're working on, um, spreadsheets for each one of the departments. Um, I'm gonna try and stop casting and see if I can. Uh, so we're looking at circulation versus space regarding our collections. And if we are making so, there we go, perfect. Um, what was happening 20 years ago regarding circulation and popular items is different than what's happening now. And so we're starting to think about, just for an example, our paperbacks. People are very interested in checking out paperbacks. And I think, you know, we have the beach and people travel a lot. Um, and we only allocate a very small space in the library for, for paperbacks. So, you know, if we expand that area and that collection, you know, that'll help our statistics. So that's kind of what we're thinking about. Um, our nonfiction collection just is not circulating at the rate that it used to. It's only 7% of our total.
That's surprising.
No, there's something called the internet.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right.
So it's, I'm sorry, it's 17% of our total, um, circulation, which is a decent amount, except for it takes up half of our library. Most of our stacks are nonfiction. So it doesn't make sense to have nonfiction there or in such an expansive, um, area. Do we start to think about integrating, you know, mysteries and science fiction and our fiction collection and maybe fiction goes in the back? These are just like things that we're starting all over, but we're doing it. We want to do it, um, driven by data. So we're taking some time to look at our space and to look at, um, circulation and just see what we have going on if it makes sense. So we're doing it for each one of our rooms, but I think the adult collection is probably gonna be the most difficult to do. But I think it's just a time to have the conversation because the way that things were set up are 10, 20 years ago and it made perfect sense then. But things that are popular, like we have a whole area for audiobooks. Do we need that much space for audiobooks anymore?
Yeah.
No, everybody does.
Yeah, right. Um, we are seeing too, this actually made me think of, um, the plan that Stefiora did with the, when the stacks went, um, kind of the long way instead of horizontal. Um, because what we're seeing is a lot of times we look down to our new collections. Good. What I see here is what you're seeing. So our, um, our new collections, um, go out a lot. Um, so they, their monthly average of about 50% of the collection goes out monthly. So what that's telling me is right now we have the new books out. We have them out for three months and then they go into the fiction section, which is where they pretty much go to die because then nobody goes and looks at them. So when we start thinking about, well, we need to expand, uh, how large our new section is so that we can keep folks longer in that space because people are drawn to the new things. Um, something that's been a success this year is our, um, displays. So, um, I'm gonna flip over to, we only did a couple of months, but that's um, but pulling out some of these books from fiction or nonfiction that aren't getting any attention. Uh, we are seeing, oops.
How, how is it, excuse me, Megan, how has this decided to ditch a book? You know, like, let's say Cormac McCarthy, he was writing books back in the 1990s. Um, and I'm sure he still read. So how do you know?
Yeah, so.
I just mentioned him because he just died and he was so fine.
Yeah. So it's the condition of the book. So if it's a mass, it goes, maybe we replace it, maybe we don't. Uh, but also how many checkouts it's received in the last 10 years. And so we do that based on how much space we have sometimes too. So if we have a good amount of space, we might let something stay because it's making the collection whole that hasn't gone out in five years. But if something hasn't gone out in 10 years plus, it moves along.
Hasn't even been asked.
No, and we'll check to see if another library has it too. That's another factor. So if we're the only library that has this book, we'll keep that because we're hoping that somebody in the network. But if we're the only library that has this book and no one's checked it out in 10 years, then we know really nobody wants it because nobody in the 27 libraries has even looked for it. Um, so that's kind of how we start to move things along. Um, some libraries, and again, it depends on space. Some libraries do 10 years, some libraries do seven years. Kind of depends on who was running the place and, and what they think.
And do you save the classics even though there's no demand for it?
Um, so what we do with the classics is we actually buy the newest cover. So everyone judges, judges a book by its cover. So what we'll do is we'll, we'll get rid of the old kind of falling apart one and we'll update it with one that has like a shiny fancy cover and it goes out again. Cause it's appealing to a new, any group.
Is there a certain group of books that you feel as a library you have to have, like, you know, the gold standard of
Like collective Shakespeare?
No, or like the Oxford Dictionary or something like that. The OED.
Yeah, I guess that dictionary would be important. So Shakespeare, maybe instead of having, uh, 10 of his books, I'll get an anthology that has all of his books maybe in one book. Cause it'll save a little bit of space and we still have that basis covered. Um, and.
But nobody ever checks it out?
No. But it would be more likely to go out if it has all the books on it because then, you know, depending on what you're interested in, you'll still check out the same book. So it would be more likely to circulate than having 12. You know, for different ones. So it's just kind of, it's not about getting rid of all of the books, but it's about being strategic about what's actually going out and being realistic about that.
So we, you know, in the bookstore, we do very much the same thing all the time, shuffling through latest books pretty much only.
Yeah. Well, and also if the, if the information's no longer accurate, I mean, we'd hate for Cohasset students to be coming to our library and checking out a book about a country that doesn't exist anymore, you know? So those, you know, nonfiction tends to be readed more often than other collections because we have to make sure that whatever we have is correct. Um, and all that information changes so frequently. Um, so another kudos to Michaela. So when Michaela started, she was done with library. Need more displays. And so, you know, as we always do, we give everybody a chance with their ideas. And so what she's done, if you can see here at the bottom, we have anywhere between 120 books to almost 200 books going out more because she's putting them on the slide. So these are our display books. Um, so if they're certainly, um, increasing our stipulation on things that maybe would not have gone out otherwise.
These are usually quite themed.
Yes, yeah, these are the themed tables. That's just why we bought the, um, that round, the display, the round display, um, to kind of start to foster some of these things. So, um, kudos to Michaela on that. So we're gonna do this for the different departments. We're just keeping track and, and see maybe where it brings us. I'm sure it'll bring up a discussion. And, um, the last thing's just a fun thing. So we had the OCAL and Library Crawl, um, this week and next week. And what that program was, was all the 27 libraries getting together, um, and promoting going to visit each other and going to visit. So, um, people have passports that they get from their home library and they go to the different libraries and get their passports stamped. Um, and they get entered to win prizes and things. Um, so, uh, we had some visitors, uh, from Duxbury who was children's librarians in Duxbury going, they're dressing up as a dinosaur and a unicorn. And they're going to all the different libraries to help promote this program. So I didn't get super into this program because they felt like we're kind of off the beaten path and maybe less likely for people to come and visit. And I was absolutely wrong. We had 60 visitors just this week who haven't visited our library before.
Six oh?
Six oh.
Wow.
Yep. Um, yeah. And so, and 15 of those were from like, um, further away, like Plymouth or Braintree or Quincy. Um, so, so I got my phase. I wanted to make sure we were a part of it, but I didn't make a big deal out of it because I just didn't think this was gonna be a big winner.
Brilliant.
Well, cause. So, uh, so it's been a great success and I look forward to being a part of it. I just get ready to be there. I'm just curious, like what did.
Oh, people love it.
So all last weekend, last weekend was a big thing. Um, and people just came through and people are having a great time. Uh, we actually have.
Did you have a snack, like candy or something to give out?
Um, we had the stamps and then Michaela made this really awesome, if they wanted to take a tour of Cohasset's movie sites. Did you see this?
Oh, that's a good idea.
So she had a few stops that you can make around Cohasset to check out like where certain movies were. And she had a whole pamphlet and everything.
So sweet.
So it was awesome. Um, so every library kind of found whatever in their town is, would be interesting to folks. So we did movies, but other places did other, other things. So, um, some other projects that we're working on, um, I won't share. Um, I, that moves. Yeah, I'll let you share your news. Um, um, and the last thing I'm starting to look at too and run reports on, and I don't have anything to show you quite yet, is the library usage by time. Um, I've been questioning a little bit about, even though our survey came back and said people were very happy with our hours, I'm questioning a little bit from what I see, um, we don't get a lot of patrons between seven and eight. And would it, would it, the question is, would it be more useful to open a little bit earlier and close a little bit earlier? Friday at five o'clock, people are running in like crazy. Do we stay open until six o'clock on Fridays? So again, I want to make data-driven decisions, but there's some things that I'm starting to observe and the staff's starting to observe that, uh, maybe we could serve our, our patrons better by having some different times. And also optimizing our staff time and our budget to pay people from seven to eight when there's nobody here. Maybe isn't the best use of our, of our money. So, um, that's something else that I'm looking at. And lastly, uh, we are waiting on a quote from Sign Works, who does all of our softet signs, um, lettering around the building to hopefully come up with, um, some signage that says quiet room or quiet area. We've talked for a long time about putting, making that periodical area kind of the quiet space. And it seems like now is the time we're starting to get, um, some complaints from folks sitting at the wooden tables that the children's room's loud and the space is, you know, an active space and the staff is giggling, which we need to work on, but they're giggling. And so, um, if we make that space in the back, the expectation that it's gonna be quiet and lowers the expectation that it's going to be completely silent in the main part of the building, um, I think would be a good way to start managing that. So we're waiting on the ladders and Carolyn and Lain help me with that. So thank you. Uh, and that's it for me.
Great.
All right. This is the last, well, second to last, I guess, warrant of the year. So we're wrapping everything up. And then I'll work with you trying to find a day that, um, you can come and sign off. Yeah. Other years, they've allowed us to wait until we had our trustees meeting in July to finish the, the fiscal year. But it seems like, um, the new finance director wants everything in a little bit early, which is gonna be a little challenging because sometimes it does come in late. She basically said if it comes in after the deadline. Too bad, too bad. It won't get paid.
We did.
Oh, you have to go to town meeting or something. I think that's what she said.
Yeah. Um, we did stop our ordering June 15th. So that.
Yeah, that was Megan's in 15 days. Cut off of, so we won't have any Kleenex for the next two weeks, but we'll, we'll manage. Uh, but yeah, and the books, all the material, everything Megan said, cut off of tomorrow, I guess.
Yeah.
But I think everyone's done as well. So, um, that's exciting. Another year in the books. And as far as the bills, we've just got the usual. It was kind of a lot this month. Um, the only things that are not something that you already recognize is, um, the maintenance, the Americana. We had the tent put up and we were splitting the bill with, uh, the senior center. Cause they also had some things done. And then, uh, the newsletter, it's, it is expensive, but we were able to get a lower price from a different vendor. Although then it took longer than we had hoped to, to, um, be printed, although they did deliver it included in the price, which is kind of a big deal because they're heavy now. They're, they're, uh, four pages and.
And that goes to everybody in town.
Goes to everybody in town. So it's, 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 it is a lot of work. But Megan, you just have to drive to Braintree Printing, load it all up in her car, bring it here. And then we have to sort it by routes, by the postal routes. Then bring it down to the post office. You have to go around in the back to the loading dock and put it all up there and then it goes out. So we're pretty good at it now, but, um, it was really nice having them at least deliver it.
It was.
But, um, maybe next quarter we'll just submit it a few days earlier or something. I don't know how we'll, we'll work on that. And we're still potentially considering having the, um, the Votac do the printing. And Nicole at Safe Harbor used them for, uh, uh, it was sort of like, I don't, I don't know what it was for, but it was all bound. They did a really nice job. It was some sort of a, like a pamphlet or something that she was putting together about the work they do. And she said it was a third of the cost of what she normally pays. So, when I talked to him last time, I said that.
It's going to a good cost.
And it's going to a great cost. It's a good, um, um, experience for the kids to, to learn how to do this. So they're getting a, um, really heavy duty printer, uh, they think in the, in early fall. So it won't be the next newsletter, but probably the December one, I think. So that will save us some money, which is, it is totally worth it, but it is a big drain on the, the budget.
So, yeah, we, we, we almost double spent our marketing budget. Did we increase our marketing ask for this year? I don't remember.
Yes, we did. But we took it from something else.
Yeah, it was like a thousand and we took it from somewhere.
So it's not gonna be enough anyway, if you, if you keep.
Yeah, well, we're hoping this, and yeah, we start using the Votac, it will be enough.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I've heard a lot of positive feedback from people who get it in their mailbox. They, they like seeing it like that.
Yeah.
But, um, yeah, I don't know if, if there's been any thought about like whether that's the right way to spend the money, whether we need to find it somewhere. Like, you know, kind of, I just noticed that kind of.
It is a big jump. And, um, it, it, I think the biggest jump was when we went from, you know, two-page item to a four-page item. That, that's a lot more expensive. Then they have to staple it. It's a whole thing. Um, and I did talk to them about maybe we use thinner paper. I think the Rec One is just construction. It's not real heavy duty.
Glossy, yeah.
It's not glossy, yeah. And it's only one, it's much cheaper for them because they just picked a color for the paper and then it's black ink.
And does it count? Do they have for now?
They do. Ted does it. Yeah, Ted does it. But.
Isn't the glossy paper the least expensive? That's why we picked it.
I think there was something about that. Yeah. Um, but anyway, so, uh, they, they ended up going with the heavier weight paper. I think if you get it too thin.
Well, especially if you have it on both sides, it could, it could be.
Right.
But I mean, why did we go to four pages? I mean, is there?
Cause we just have so much programming.
It was so impressive.
Yeah, it was just so much.
That's why we got great feedback. We did because of all the things that are going on.
I, I think, I mean, it's obviously Megan's decision, but I think it's totally worth it from what I've heard from people. And it, because it goes to everyone, you're not just getting people who are already using the library. You're getting really the, the target audience that we want. So, we're working on ways to try to cut back on, on things. Um, that's one of my goals for next year is to try to review all of the vendors and see, you know, we've, we've had some of these vendors for years and I do comparison shop when I'm buying supplies or whatever, but maybe there's other vendors out there that have, you know, lower rates that we don't know about or we have, you know, we are in that purchasing consortium. We do get discounts on some things like that, but it's, it's always a good idea to, you know, shop around a little bit. We have limited funds, but.
And then remind me, like, we're, we're already $1,300 overspent on our non-personnel things. And then the June B will just make it that much more. Was there extra money in the personnel to cover that?
Yes, let me apply on the personnel. So.
I, I thought that was the case, but I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah. And I don't, as I said, everybody's finished their purchases a couple of days ago and so, and those are through Amazon or whatever, things like that. So I'm, I, I'm sure that some will tomorrow trickle in, but I can't.
Yeah, there's not much. I know there's a few mileage bills coming in for like $50 or something.
Yeah.
But we've paid, um, you know, the technology bills, the Comcast, all of that is already paid in this warrant. So I don't think there'll be too much more that'll come out of the appropriated, but, um, I think we can make up for it without making trouble with the, the personnel.
The other question I had on this was, um, how did we do with the MRR and the MRR? Are, are we like?
Yes, yes. We, uh, I think it was 144 we had to spend and we are at, um, 161. So we're over.
Which means we're gonna have to spend 161 plus next year.
Well, it's, isn't it three?
No, no.
Yeah, it's an average of three.
No, 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 that's the mark.
Oh, that's the mark. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. The MRR is just, it's a, it's a 70%, 90%.
Yeah, 19%.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So that, I don't think that, that will change, but, um. Great. Anyway, so that was that. There was.
The other thing of note too, is that, uh, we kind of have an ongoing deficit with our printing, patron printing. Because we got the printer for the patrons and then we shut down for COVID like a month later. So we still had to pay for the rental of it for, you know, the two years that nobody wanted to use public. I mean, I'm really just starting to see people use the public computers again now. So we went through a lot of years. Um, so I'm working with Jennifer on that to make that whole done. Who was the previous finance director kind of just kept going, don't worry about it. I know it's not you guys. Don't worry about it. Like, kind of, I know you're not mismanaging anything. This is just what happened. But Jennifer and I are working on figuring out how to make that whole.
Start, start from zero. Yeah, yeah. I think the, um, the lease is, uh, it's a little later than the, the staff copier, but it's within the next year.
Right.
Uh, like maybe December or January. So, um, Michelle Leary had been talking to, was it Canon?
Canon.
We've had so many different ones. I was thinking Xerox, but we've already got one to try to get a different contract with a lower rate. Cause it is expensive per month.
And everyone's complaining about it. Every department. It's, it's just more than anyone argued before.
Yeah. So that should make, if that goes through, that'll make a big difference.
Thank you.
Oh, and the, we did get the music circus second, uh, portion. And the only other thing that I have, it's not really financially related, but maybe is that we did get approved as a passport acceptance.
Congratulations.
So actually it's making charge $35 a person. So there is a little bit of money we'll, we'll bring in, but, um,
Nice.
It's, it's a.
But that's the next newsletter.
Yeah. So the process, the next thing is we all, we gotta get it trained. They want everyone to be trained. And then we have to, so it's a few more steps, but we've gotten that part. That's great.
How much time do they wanna train you? How many hours are they talking about?
Uh, I don't, it's, it's an online training. They asked, when I, I just got back from vacation, so I just skimmed the memo that I got, uh, sent. They want at least three staff members trained so that, you know, yeah.
Oh, that's terrific to have that.
So what actually happens? I come in, I need a passport. I come to you and where do you? It's like with your, just like at the post office. Just like at the post office. So you have to have all your items. Yes. And we can, the great thing is we have the copier. I know if you ever go to the Hingham post office, you have to go across the street. There's a little like parade over there. And the little like bag over there, go, you have copies. It's always something that's not copied. And so we have, do have that. They did ask if we did photo service, but I don't think we're gonna go that far. But yeah, so you're just, we're just processing. We're not making any decisions about the person's eligibility for.
For the photos anyway.
So you can always send them to you all. If you're coming to get your passport, you know that you have to have that kind of thing. That seems, I think that's pretty obvious. So it's more just, we're taking the paperwork essentially, or checking to make sure everything's.
So maybe that's one thing also to put on the website, you know, we are now processing passports. Please have the following information with you when you come in.
Yeah, right. Yeah, exactly. And we can, we can make it by appointment only. Which would make it easier. You know, pick times when we have enough staff. People aren't just randomly coming in, but yeah, it's really exciting.
It's a great idea. Very soon we'll be marrying people.
I know. I had the notary thing. Someone just asked me the other day, you have notary? And I had to tell them no. So. I don't know who, I guess, no one in town. So.
UPS store does it. Yeah, I was just in there and noticed that yesterday. I was thinking about that.
I think they charge for it.
Probably, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think they charge.
Yeah, I've listened to getting it, getting a notary also. It's not hard, but.
It's not hard.
Halfway through, it's like, ah, maybe it's not right.
It's a pretty simple form.
You have to get a bunch of people to vouch for you.
Exactly. Yeah, you have to get a lawyer.
Just go to the dump.
Like we do with our, with our. You could bring a lawyer, I guess. But you need a lawyer is the first one.
Yeah. Well, that's the easy part in my world because my entire family's all lawyers.
But yeah, and then it's not, there's not much more than that. But still, anyway. If the town changes its mind, maybe we'll, we'll see if we can offer that as well.
But it only got more complicated after nine eleven, because then you had to really attest to the fact that you have checked certain, you know, verifications from the person coming in, blah, blah, blah. And you're supposed to kick the book.
Yeah.
I let that notary stuff go because I also didn't want to have to go to certain places to verify certain things.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, good point. Yeah.
Well, you have one, you wore one before.
I was.
Yeah.
Yeah, because then you have to get your notary application notarized. That's the other part.
Yeah.
Yeah, a little circular. Anyway, so that's, unless anyone has questions besides. A bank always has.
Yeah, usually, yes.
Yeah.
We don't want to forget to sign the bills though.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, we have to approve first.
All right. Do we, we do roll call for bills, right? Carolyn Coffee?
Hi.
Sarah Peace?
Hi.
Mary Lawrence?
Hi.
Elaine Russell?
Hi.
Catherine Harvey?
Hi.
All right. So then that's me. I don't have much. Thank you to Sharon Allison, Bridget Kristen, and Gail for sending their quarterly reports. Pavilion is really the only other thing. We had another CLT, another Pavilion meeting a couple of weeks ago, which was only three of us there. So it was super efficient. Basically where we are in that is that we have about 70% raised, which is excellent. But you know, obviously, as much as we raise is as much as we're gonna spend. So we just keep, keep going. And Barb Withf had a sign constructed, the thermometer sign, which we talked about in the last meeting, is constructed. I volunteered my daughter to do the painting on that. So she will be doing that as soon as we get the sign from Barb, which should be any day. And there's, we're doing an article in the Anchor and we're gonna do a postcard mailing, probably in the fall, right? If we decide.
We're, we're. It would have been nice if we could have gotten it out before Memorial Day. Feel like people have shifted into summer mode and that if we do a big marketing blitz now, we might. It might not get the same amount of attention as if we do it in September. If I'm not, somebody feels differently about that. So our, our thought was to, you know, in the beginning of the, you know.
So I'm getting bombarded with questions about this. So what?
Good.
When? So what's the plan?
The, the plan would, would be to send out the, to have an article in the Anchor announcing that we have a $20,000 matching gift opportunity. And that we would send a postcard, just a small postcard to every household in Cohasset.
Excellent.
And, and, you know, advertise this to people. And hope that we, this will be kind of like the, the broad reach of small, you know, get lots of small donations in. And we'll continue to cultivate people who, you know, have said, oh yeah, I want to support it, but yet we still haven't gotten anything from them.
They may be waiting to hear. I, I'm thinking.
About like construction plans and so forth.
Is this really gonna happen?
Yeah. Well, may, maybe we do an Anchor article with an update now and, and then do the marketing.
Yeah, it's been quiet. It's been quiet.
That's true. That's true.
Yeah.
We're meeting again Monday. So thank you for that observation. Yeah, we, we need to.
Because you're right. People are wondering like when.
I think it's important to keep it right in Congress.
Yeah. And so the, the only other thing I would add to your report is the, Chris did get drawings done for the procurement officer. To get us an updated estimate of how much it's gonna cost. So we can make sure that we fundraise to the, the right number. I've tried to get in touch with her and have heard nothing. I don't know if you've seen her, but I think I'll.
Try.
And. Oh, and the other good thing, I haven't even gotten to tell you this. I had a wonderful conversation with Mark Cameron, who was on the Town Hall Building Committee with me. He works in construction and he was the one who was going through all the details of the plans and everything. And I asked him if he would be willing to help with the construction part of this project. And he said he would be delighted to. I think thrilled was the word.
Oh, fantastic.
So, so that is, that was really exciting. I was so pleased. So anyway.
Does he sit on any boards or anything in town?
He, he is, no, is the answer. The only thing he's doing right now is helping the swim center with their construction part. They have issues with their project. So he's, his father-in-law was kind of in charge of that. So he's helping with that. But.
So Carolyn, you had mentioned also at one time, if we don't have enough money and, and we want to start. That you would want to do the stage, the, it's a hardscape down, down there rather than the actual pavilion. You know, the port, the portico, what do we call it?
The pergola.
No.
We talked, but, but we would still do the patio and the walls and everything, just not the actual pergola. At, at the time, and, and, you know, who knows that the prices seem to be all over the map. But at the, the last time we got an estimate from the landscape architect, he estimated the pergola alone was going to be $70,000. So that just seemed like something that could go on later as long as we're prepped for it, but we could do everything else. But I'm, I'm optimistic that we'll be, unless we get.
Has the committee given any thought to the kind of landscaping that we want to do in terms of responsible ecological?
Well, also the sort of wet maintenance part of it too.
Well, yeah. And there's a whole, yeah, that's right. But there are ways to go. With the maintenance and to have that. Are you still in, you're in Garden Club, right? Are you thinking asking the Garden Club to maintain it?
No.
That would have been enough.
Hard stop.
No, I think that the responsibility really is. Which isn't to say that there might not be volunteers in the Garden Club who would like to be involved in something.
Sure, there's so many. Carolyn out there all every summer by herself.
Yeah, I know.
That's, I just don't understand why the town can't do that.
They, they don't do stuff like that. I mean, they know, you know?
I mean, have you ever pushed them?
A little ago.
They mulched.
Carolyn got them to mulch every year.
They mulch. That's a step up.
Yeah.
We never used to get mulch from them.
But have you pushed them? You're so nice.
I've gotten them to mulch. And actually, the hollies got pruned.
The hollies look good.
Yeah, the hollies got pruned. I bumped into him at the time. He goes, you know, those hollies need to get pruned again. And like the next time I came here, he did them. He had done them without, you know?
So, so they're, they're stepping up their game. I think they're doing, they're doing it.
We have to use the app. We have to use the app.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, there you go.
Good. Congratulations. Yeah, yeah.
I noticed the iris this the other day. I know that's not them. That's your, that's beautiful.
I know that there was an interview or film done on, you know, Responsible Guardian. At the.
Wouldn't Barbara Renwood help without stock? She's beautiful.
She does a lot of dirty. I mean, she has, she does so much with Wild Cohasset though. It's hard to like pull her in something else. She kind of runs that whole thing and, you know, waging the war against the crowded mustard.
She got come to my house.
Yeah, I've got it. She's everywhere trying to, you know, pull it up and back it.
Comes to you a certain amount of planning, planning situation.
Yeah, I really could ask her. They have Instagram account. They should, we check us the Instagram account. And they do like, you know, get together. So yeah, people will do in one area if someone wants, you know? I'm always seeing it when I'm walking the dog. And I'm like, I should just bring it back. It's been there. They need it. I'm aware of the dog.
Put this to me the other day. He's like, can we get those ghosts maybe?
Oh, yeah, right. Yeah, they go. Yeah, you can, you can get them. You can rent them for the day. I don't know about for the day, but I mean, they go.
They, they, they. Make it happen. So.
Yeah, you can call over there.
I thought you had that suggestion at your house.
I don't know. I really did have a play.
This is in a big area.
Over near West Rock Beach.
Oh, okay.
They rent them back or whatever. They have them down and they got a tent.
Yeah.
I need anything.
Making sure that that wouldn't get taken down.
Anyway. All right. Okay. So the friends, their total appeal for the year is at 37 to 49. So they ended up doing great. And honestly, I think the biggest change was the letter writing campaign. They did a secondary targeted campaign. They did an email blast. Then they did a letter writing campaign to people who had donated previously, did not give this year, and they got like $6,000 out of that. So that was.
That's fantastic.
Yeah, that worked really well. For basic books, in three quarters, they got $2,000 and the inside book sale was 1850. So that ended up, I mean, that's been just tremendous. Yeah, because it, it has boosted the, our own book sales so much because we get better inventory from Barbara again. Like so vigilant, like diving into those book bins to pull out the best inventory. So, so they're doing great.
Do they find that by stop and shop, people deposit more there or is it here by the library?
I think it's pretty even.
I think it's just filled every week.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, they're, they're honestly so full that people are like having to come back the next week because they can't.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's amazing.
Yeah, it's really, and I still see like there was just another, somebody put on 143 just yesterday. I was trying to sell some music circus tickets and I was on it and there was somebody asking about where to donate books. And so, I mean, it's almost.
Immediately.
Of course I did. Yes, of course. And actually, a few people had already beat me to it and said, there are two bins, one's behind the library and one's. Stop and shop. So then I explained what happens after you donate to the library and how it goes right back into program. So that's the friends. And I think that's pretty much it. Unless anybody has anything else that they would like to raise. And do I hear a motion adjourned?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right.
Thank you.
Stop recording now.
So why don't you do a talk at some point?
Yeah.
What's a good line for you?